That the first one I see sitting here smiling is Mr. Montos. So, we're gonna ask you, sir, to come to the table to start with the process. And what we're gonna do is each candidate will have in half an hour to do the interview process. And each counselor, I think you'll be able to ask up to two questions of the candidate. So, ready? Alrighty, here we go. Could you first start off and tell us who you are and why you wanna be a counselor?
My name is Jimmy Monto. Let me get this hot mic in front of me. My name is Jimmy Monto. I currently serve as president of tomorrow's neighborhoods today, president of the Eastwood Neighborhood Association, vice president of development for CNY Pride. I sit on the Citizens Advisory Board for the Syracuse Area Land Bank. I sit on the Mayor's LGBTQ Commission. Why do I want to be a counselor? That's a very easy answer for me. I think that I will be able to do a lot of good. I think that my focus for the last several years has been on the neighborhoods. And I think that's what a district counselor is supposed to do, and I think I will be able to do a great job at that.
Thank you. We'll start this way, Counselor Hogan.
Jim, and we, of course, have worked together for a lot of years. What prompted you to get involved with all these organizations? You've got a lot of balls in the air as far as those things go.
Well, the honest answer is I, my life kind of hit a road bump. And I was at a crossroads, which I think the city is at one too right now, so we'll talk about that later. But I was at a crossroads where I either could take myself and move over to the sidelines and, you know, sit on a couch somewhere or lay down and do nothing, or I could actually stand up and try to fix some of the problems that I see and the problems that I still see. Some are fixed. I'm not gonna claim that I have fixed any of them completely, but I think I've done as much as I can possibly do to try to fix them. Yeah.
Alrighty, just to piggyback on your question, you said you were at a crossroad. What word crossroad?
Well, I had been charged with a crime in the paper this morning. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hide from that. I won't run from it. I never have run from it. I was young. I was not as smart as I am today, I don't think. And I was at a place where I didn't know what to do. I was terrified. I was scared. I was, as much counsel as I saw it from the person that I, you know, lived with and am now married to and have been with for 21 years, as much counsel as I saw it from parents or people that guided me, I still didn't know what to do. So, I had to sit down and really think about what, what my plan was. What was my plan to make it so I could redeem myself, not only in the eyes of everybody around me, but in my own eyes for myself? And that's what that crossroads was. And I think I, not to pat myself on the back, but I think I've done a pretty good job of actually picking the right path.
Thank you. Counselor Caldwell.
You asked my question.
Most importantly, now that we, I can say for the majority of us sitting here, do you know and understand the role of being a common counselor in the city of Syracuse?
Well, let me tell you a story. So, my, my husband and I bought our first house 20 years ago. And I lived on a street that was a quiet little neighborhood in Outer Sedgwick. And it, the neighborhood was well-established. The people that lived there were older. They had been there for a very long time. We were new to the neighborhood. And the house next door to me became a haven for drug sales and guns and violence. And he was right next door to me. We shared a driveway. Looking back, that was, you know, the house wasn't a bad decision. But at the time, I reached out to my common counselor for that district, and I got no help. No help, no help, no help, no help. And what we ended up doing was leaving that neighborhood because of that bad actor next to us. And that should never be the case. If you are picking up the phone, you're calling somebody in a position of district counselor, and they're not helping you, then something's wrong. So, yes, I think I know exactly what the role is, and that is to make sure that that doesn't happen. Make sure that people who want to stay in this city are safe and continue to stay here.
And my second and final question is, what does the fifth district mean to you?
Well, the fifth district means a lot to me. So, my grandfather was born there, my father was born there, I was born there. I left for a while and went back to it and have lived there ever since, you know? The fifth district is a very, covers a lot of area. There's a wide variety of neighborhoods. You're not going to get the same answer from one street to the other as to, you know, what the concerns are. But it's my home. I've, you know, I was born on James Street, so.
I would like to go back to asking your question, Mr. Monto. So, being, if you were able to get to position of fear, I mean, the fifth district, could you be fair and equitable, just because you're in that district? Would you be able to look at the whole piece at large? And I know you wouldn't be at large position, but would you be able to say, okay, this is my district, but when I'm making decisions, can I make decisions that would support and make sense for the entire team? And that means the whole city of Syracuse?
Absolutely. The answer's a resounding yes. We have to look at the city as a whole. If, if I'm just making decisions for the fifth district, that makes no sense whatsoever.
And my last question would be, what does, what keeps you up at night when it comes down to the city of Syracuse?
There's probably not just one answer to that question, but there's, let me give you a few. I am kept up at night when I know that my neighbors are trying to figure out if a sound that they hear is either a gunshot or a firecracker. I'm kept up at night at the thought that there are people that are afraid that someone's going to climb through their back window in the middle of the night and take their car keys and take their car or rob them. Crime is, crime is scary. It scares me. It keeps me awake. Sometimes I'm worried that someone's going to bust through my back door, right? And my dogs are probably going to just not do anything to protect me. They're gonna lick them and say, welcome to the house, if they do break in. But, you know, there's a lot to keep us up at night. This is, this is a city that has its struggles, but on the other hand, this is also a city that is used to fighting. We're not going down without a fight. And I think that's evident. Look around. Look, look around at some of the projects that you see in these neighborhoods in those little pockets where the people that live in the neighborhood are not laying down and saying, we're going to give up. So, as much as there are things that keep me up at night, there's hope too. There's a whole lot of hope. But we have to embrace that. If we, if we don't embrace that hope, then we're done.
Thank you.
Counselor Majoke, you have any questions for Mr. Monto?
Of course I have some.
Okay, now, well, you're not gonna take the whole half hour?
I'm not gonna take the whole.
I got two questions.
Two questions. Two. I thought I had 15 minutes.
No, 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 no. Your 15 minutes, you was already late, so cook.
Jimmy, it's good to see you here.
You too.
The first thing I wanna ask you is, is as, as a gay man, what does this mean to you, being here?
There's an emotional one I didn't expect, Chol, but thank you, Counselor Majoke. So, I would be the first openly LGBTQIA+ person to sit in one of these chairs with a microphone in front of it. Listen, I know what it feels like to be punched in the face and called a faggot. And I'm gonna say that word openly right here in front of everyone with that camera rolling on me. And that shapes a person. It changes, it changes how your life unfolds. When you are bullied and there's, listen, that's not over. Just because we have marriage equality or we think that there are laws on the books helping, that is not over. There are kids that are 12, 13 years old who were, you know, born male and want to live as a female, and they are bullied to the point where they commit suicide. So, what it means to me is if, if I am an example of, look what is possible for a young gay kid bullied in a way that I am, will talk about every day with, with every gay youth that comes in front of me, I will talk about every day. It does get better. It does get better, but there's a lot of work to be done, you know? Yeah. It's not lost on me.
All right, I probably should've saved that question for last, but. My second, and thank you for that, Jim. I know it was a little hard. My second question to you, and I'll, I'll shut up, okay? Second question to you is I wanted to talk to me about leadership. And what do you see the role of being a counselor in term of being a leader is? And, and, yeah, talk to me about leadership and...
Well, I think for me, the leadership's very simple. Go knock the doors, right? Go out into your district and actually knock on the door and say, what can I do for you? And you automatically look like a leader at that point because you're, you're taking care of problems. It's very often that you have a block in a neighborhood where one of the neighbors may be calling and complaining about something going on, but I can guarantee you, the rest of the block feels the same way. They just have either given up hope on fixing it, or they don't wanna take the time or they don't wanna get involved. But if you knock the doors and you talk to all of them and you find out exactly what they feel, you can help fix the problem and boom, you're a leader. You're a leader on that block and just let that extrapolate over and over throughout your district and throughout this whole city, and it works.
Thank you, Counselor Majoke. While you ponder more questions, Counselor Penaaguas.
Hi, Jimmy. Good to see you here too.
Thank you.
So, since we're in the topic of leadership and, and you expressed, you know, how, how your leadership, you know, can, can be out in, in the public, but can you talk a little bit about your leadership style when it comes to administration and the work that we do here at council?
Well, I think that I am a collaborator. So, let me use TNT as an example. TNT is, is a great example. So, five years ago, that organization was struggling, to say the least, right? It has been around for a very long time. It has been supported by multiple mayors, multiple councils, but it was struggling. It had become rooms in eight neighborhoods or eight sectors of the city that were just people complaining about the same thing over and over and over again. And nothing was getting changed because there was no leadership to actually try to change it. So, they were doing little pocket projects and that was it. And when I took over as leader of that organization, I said, okay, we cannot be reactive. We cannot be sitting here and reacting to all of these problems, the same neighbor coming in and saying the same thing over and over. We have to be proactive. We have to try to figure out some projects that we can do that actually elevates us to, you know, being proactive versus reactive. And I think that we have done that by putting together partners. The immediate decision was made to start, you know, calling the Community Foundation, calling the Gifford Foundation, calling these other organizations and saying, we don't just want your money. We want your support to go out. And, you know, that first year, TNT is the single largest distributor of lead paint information of any nonprofit inside the city of Syracuse. That was that same year. And I can go on and talk about what we're doing right now, and I, if we have enough time at the end, I would gladly talk about last week and how much progress we're making, so.
Thank you. And one last question. So, when, when, in the, your decision, in your process of making a decision, what are the, the elements that, you know, you base your decision-making process?
So, I, I, I just try to sit and listen, right? So, I, I think what happens is you have someone in the room that wants to do all the talking and they drowned out a lot of other people. I am patient enough to sit and let the person talk for a very, very long time and then listen to everybody else in the room too. So, that's, you know, like President Hudson just said, Counselor Chol Majoke will take an hour here to ask him the questions, but I would listen to him for an hour and then, and then. But they're valid questions, you know? They may take a little bit longer, but they're valid, so listen to everybody in the room. You know, we have some people in the neighborhoods that are very loud voices, and sometimes people will say, well, they're obnoxious. And I don't like that word because it's not obnoxious. They're passionate, right? That's the best word I can use.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna get through this quickly. What I wanna ask you is, well, first I wanna say, I heard a lot of "I," okay? And in this role, there's no "I." We're all one team, and when we make a decision, we make it as a team. Because you may represent a district, but we represent the whole city as a body. So, I just wanna throw that out there. And then I wanna ask you, do you know what the full objectives are for the role of the common council? Not what you said earlier? There's two objectives that we have sitting at this table that we're responsible for. Do you know what they are?
Well, I would assume that the second one is making sure that the finances of the city are actually in order. And the other, and then what I spoke about earlier. And forgive me for saying "I" as much as I have. I guess I've been answering questions about myself, but I, shall I go again? I definitely understand the "we," because I will tell you something. As I look around this table, if I send a text message or a phone call to all of you, you all answer me. So, I already feel like a "we," whether I'm sitting in that chair or not. I feel like "we" because we are working to keep this city afloat and make it a better place. You always pick up the phone. That's not just you, that's all of you, so I, I already feel the "we."
Okay. And the objective that we have as a council is to oversee the city budget and to write legislation. Those are our two primary roles, so I just wanna throw that out there. Alrighty.
Thank you, President. On brand, I'll ask you detailed policy questions. Redistricting, so the city's been going through redistricting process for the last year or so. The committee's put out a map. Curious your, because this'll impact you as a, as a district counselor. Curious your take on the process they went through and the ultimate product they have put out so far.
I think the process should be the model used for this entire country. Like, that's the way you do it. You actually put it back in the hands of people that have no political gain from redrawing those districts. So, the process, as I see it, was just fine. I mean, you know, if I was sitting here able to vote, I'm a yes vote. End of story. That's the way you do it. You don't do it the way, you don't gerrymander. And this body took the opportunity to not do that, so bravo.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my second question is somewhat of a two-parter, but Rezone Syracuse has just come before the council for the DGIS. Curious your thoughts on that and the ultimate product they put out? And then, BRT, Bus Rapid Transit's been kind of a, a big priority of mine. I'm curious your thoughts on, on that policy and the impact you think it would have on the fifth district, but the city in general?
So, you're gonna have to, on the BRT, the honest answer is you're going to have to educate me on that. I'm sure you will fill me with all that policy information that you have, and I would be happy to listen. Rezone, I think, is, you know, has taken a very long time, right? Much longer than I think anybody expected it to take. But I think that the focus on the business corridors and making sure that we're rezoning in a way that doesn't damage the neighborhoods that sit along those business corridors has, has been great. You know, I sit, I live a block off a business corridor. I live a block off of James Street. It's a business corridor that, over the last 30 years, has seen a rise and fall of, you know, there's, they're there, then they're not there, and then they're there again, and then they're not there again. And it's a struggle because as you drive through a neighborhood, that's what you see. You don't drive up, most people just go through these business corridors and they don't enter the neighborhood. So, they don't see that there are beautiful houses there. They see boarded-up businesses and, you know, it's a problem, so.
Okay. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
So, my first question is in regards to your time management. And I see in your experience, you're a part of a lot of boards, which are very important boards here in the city of Syracuse. So, your time management of being on the council and managing your board positions, but then also, but this is part of my first question, just now, I was like... Then part of it, not being biased, because you sit on, like, you're on the land bank, you have the Public Art Commission, the TNT board, so your time management on those boards plus not being biased when you're voting on items or in discussion on items about these particular...
So, the, I'm gonna have to scale that back because I absolutely don't have time to do all of that. So, some, and there's some of those that I should not sit on and also sit on the council just because I would feel I would be conflicted. And TNT, I will, you know, as I step away from it, when I eventually step away from it, the concern there is making sure that we leave it in good hands. They're in the middle of what is the largest public art project, you know, in the city's history. I will not leave them high and dry, but time management, some of that's going to have to go. It's just the, you know, meetings piled on top of meetings just don't work, so I will pare down. And I will recuse myself if I feel like I am, you know, if I'm sitting on that, you know, in that chair and I feel like I'm making a decision that is biased, I just will gladly recuse myself.
Okay. And my second question is, so the fifth district is huge, first of all, and it's a bit diverse. Obviously, you live in Eastwood, so your, your, your heart is there in Eastwood. Eastwood, in some cases, it's a pretty decent, fluent neighborhood, but you have other parts of the fifth district that aren't. So, those distressed areas that are in the fifth district, how are you going to be able to reach out to those constituents and make sure that you're hearing their voice, to make sure you're speaking on their behalf and helping them? What's your game plan to dissect the fifth district so everybody is made to feel like you're available to them?
Yeah. It is a giant swath of the city of the current fifth district as it sits, and the, the problems are not the same as you, you know, I said this recently before. If I knock a door in Eastwood and I ask them, what's going on in your neighborhood? What's wrong? What's your biggest problem? The answer to that question is highly likely to be very different than if I go and knock on the door at Parkside Commons, right? If I go up into the Upper Seventeenth Ward and I ask about what's going on, I may hear the deer are eating all my plants, right? That's a pretty, pretty big issue up there. I'm not gonna hear that everywhere. Like, I don't expect every problem to be the same in every pocket of the neighborhood. There are people in the city that have never been touched by gun violence. There are people in the city that have never been touched by the throes of addiction and what it can do to a family, but it affects us all. It affects us all. It's not just in that little tiny pocket of the neighborhood that you live in. This entire city suffers from that, if it's here at all. And that's, I believe that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, we're doing a good time. Counselor Schilt?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council, who've been asking so many good questions. I keep crossing them off, like, oh, I wanted to ask that. Okay, great job. So, I guess my last question is, what are your top, say, two or three priorities you'd like to see or like to start working on if you were chosen for the seat?
Boy, there's a lot. And I think I've covered a lot of them as I sit around the table. I think we need to start talking about improving the quality of life for every single person in this city. And we talk about quality of life versus standard of living, and they're two different, very different things, because quality of life means something different to every single person. Say, you know, my quality of life issues are not the same as Counselor Penaaguas and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would like to see us truly start talking about what those quality of life issues are and actually coming up with some solutions. I don't know what those are. They're different probably for every neighborhood, but we, we have to have more conversations surrounding them. We have to have more conversations about positive impacts that we can have to help those that have the least.
All done?
I'm good, thanks.
Alrighty, I am going to take chairman privilege right now. And I am gonna ask, uh, Counselor, oh my God, the auditor, being that he had covered the fifth district for many moons, I'm gonna ask him if he has anything you would like to add or ask.
Thank you, Council President. So, and I appreciate that, and everybody, I think, is very much aware of the fifth district as it currently sits. And so, the, and I think Counselor Allen's point about recognizing the diversity of that district and her asking you, how are you going to have an impact? I think the, two things. When you mentioned about hope and you mentioned about knocking on the doors and how you have some street credibility, I think the presence, as a, as a Counselor Hogan and I have talked many years about how constituent services, so my question to you is, how are you going to really juggle the fact that the city is facing a structural deficit, even though we have $120 million from the ARPA funds? But long-term, how are you going to address the district issues in context of the city up against a structural deficit that's there? How are you going to be able to have that impact in the neighborhood? And working with your colleagues, it's so important, as, as the counselors have said to you, you have to vote. And the second part of the question is, you all have fiduciary responsibility. That's huge. You have subpoena power as counselors. How do you see yourself juggling those kinds of things in the context of hopefully what I articulated?
So, to your, to your first question, I think the, and you're a good example of it. You were my common counselor in the house I live in when I, when we first moved there and for eight years.
I'm the one that didn't respond. He wasn't the counselor.
He was not the counselor, did not respond to me. Please, let me make sure that that's very clear. He was always responsive and set the example. I actually, and I will tell a very fast story, but I actually had to text Counselor Maroon at the time at, after midnight. And not only did he call me back, but he showed up in the front of my house, which was very unexpected. But that's the way you do it. And I think the example that you set for me is that we just can't lie to the constituents. The truth is the truth. The budget is the budget. We have what we have. We don't have what we don't have. That's it. It's as simple as that. If you are telling somebody that something can happen and you know in your mind that that's not going to happen, you're setting yourself up, right? And I will use an example. I have a common counselor for years, this is you again, for years, we, there was no curbs on my street, which doesn't sound like that big of a problem, but it was causing drainage problems, drainage problems, and I kept calling and calling, and the counselor kept saying to me, it's just not gonna happen this year, it's just not gonna happen this year. So, my expectations were set. I think sometimes we say, we're working on it, and it's vagary, and I don't like those answers. So, I hope that answers that first question. Be honest. Knock the doors and be honest. I don't think that in the Seventeenth Ward with the deer problem, I don't think saying, you know, I'm not gonna go up there and say, listen, we're gonna get rid of all these deer tomorrow, because that's not the truth. I don't, I don't have the answer for the deer. I'm gonna have to ask a lot of questions and guessing if I'm lucky enough to be fifth district counselor, I'm gonna learn a lot about deer.
Just say to you and the other candidate, Alphonse, the importance of presence as a district counselor is tremendous. I always used to say to the departments, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to keep people from moving out of the city. And so, your presence as there and working with your colleagues to do the legislation, as the president said, is very important. So, the, the three things are the budget, the legislation, and your constituent services, but also the teamwork that you have with your fellow counselors. I served 40 years ago, and I served 10 years ago, and I, I learned from the, that, those experiences, the teamwork that happens here gives people hope in our city to wanna live here, to stay here. So, I wish you well, and thank you, President Hudson, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, we started a little late, so I'm gonna go to ten thirty-five. And I can't read the clock, it's actually working, but okay. Um, and we're gonna let you, Mr. Montos, end up if there's anything else you would like to share with us.
So I'm gonna share with you last Thursday afternoon. Um, last Thursday afternoon at four o'clock in the afternoon, uh, we were at the Delavan Art Gallery, myself, Counselor Paniglau, uh, City Attorney Maroon, the mayor, Counselor Hogan, and many more. And we were standing in front of a mural that was painted on the walls of the Delavan Art Gallery. And to some people, you may, they may look at it and say, "Well, it's just paint on a wall." And that mural was a product of a letter that went from me to Mayor Walsh asking for money for a public arts program, um, from the ARPA funding. And there's a little bit of resistance here and there, but uh, you know, the people are coming around. And uh, that day, last Thursday, this is what we actually did. We started the day with a local artist putting his paint that he bought locally on a local wall. And the owner of that local wall donated six thousand dollars back to a nonprofit organization to have someone who makes food, a local food business, and uses students to help run her local food business, feed the public. We hired a like, a local musician to play music. And then we stood there as the neighborhood walked by and rode their bikes by and drove by and stopped, and stopped and got out of their cars, and stopped and had something to eat, and had a bottle of water. Um, and there was a community together, standing in front of what some people call just a painting, just paint on a wall. And to that, I say nonsense. Like, that's how we build community. And if I'm lucky enough to be a common counselor, that is exactly what I'm going to do, 'cause I'm already doing it. That piece of it, I'm already doing, already out there and talking to this community, um, and trying to do things that, listen, does it pretty up a wall? Yes, but that's not the point. That's not the only point. The point is, people will come together. A man walked by me and said, he was walking by, and he said, I said, "Get something to eat." And his response to me was, "Thank you, I'm so sick of the shelter food." That's it, that's it. My, that was a success for that reason alone. That day was a success, that painting was a success. And drive by it, it's on the Delavan, it's gorgeous. You know, we had someone read the poem that is on the wall, and uh, it was an uplifting moment for this city. And we're gonna do seven more, and like, that's, that's what it's about. So I will leave you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Montos, for your interest in being a part of the Syracuse City Council, and um, we'll talk soon at some point.
Thank you, thank you, all of you.
Oh, you had a question? Okay.
I, I have a statement.
Don't start.
Don't start, okay, I won't start. No, not you, Montos.
It is pertaining to the interviews? Okay, then. Alrighty then, Mr. Davis. Good morning, don't start. Alrighty, can you introduce yourself to us and tell us a little bit about you?
Good morning, counselors and everyone else. My name is Alfonso Davis. Born and raised here in the city of Syracuse. I've been an activist for a long time. I would say all my life, probably. Part of that, uh, 'cause my mama had me out pushing and doing stuff for a very long time, along with other mothers in the, the projects where I grew up at, who were pretty much involved in a lot of things. Married, five kids. All of them went to the Syracuse City Schools. Four, two of them graduated, the other two are still in school. And um, I'm just consistently uh, involved in what is, I believe, is a city that has the potential to be great. There are just some things that we need to do that can help manifest those things. And so I try to keep myself involved in uh, our day-to-day uh, operation of things that goes on in our city. And sometimes you wanna take a backseat because it's, it's overwhelming, it could be overwhelming. Um, and every now and then I'll fall back and let those who are doing, doing things continue to push, and then when they need me, or they say, "Oh, well, we need you to come back." I, I come back and try to add my um, skill sets, um, and what I have to bring to the table to help. So that's um, pretty much me in a nutshell. Uh, like I said, I grew up on the south side, and I live on the east side. What I do currently, um, still life insurance, uh, still work for Spectrum. Part-time, I work with a friend of mine, uh, doing gun safety, um, and um, martial artists. I started back training again. When you get old, you gotta keep the body right, so. I actually started back training again about maybe seven months ago. Boy, what a challenge. Um, and my body is telling me, "You ain't twenty-one no more," but, but that's, you know, pretty much a, a good part about me.
Okay. Well, we're gonna go a little bit out of order because the counselor that came in late has to leave early, so we're gonna let him ask you some questions.
Appreciate it, Madam President.
Two, two questions.
Two questions, that's it. I promised to be two. Um, uh, Alfonso, uh, thank you so much for showing interest to be here. Um, the first question I wanna ask is, you know, as you've seen the council, what do you think that you can bring to this body that, that would benefit this body and our city?
I think what I can bring to the body is um, my experience in activism. Um, and my experience in um, trying to help those who've reached out to me. And it's not just some people would think, well, it's just a certain segment of the community. I've had people from all over this city because of my activism and because of my um, unwillingness to have a, a closed mouth, speak up. Um, and so that ability and that skill set, uh, to work with people and everybody, um, that experience, um, that I had actually, um, many moons ago, of actually writing legislation, of being a part of legislation being written. Um, that would be the Citizens Review Board. I served on a task force to help create that. My language is actually in that, uh, my wording, um, some of my wording, not all. It was introduced by Counselor, uh, Charles Anderson, but myself and others helped draft that. Um, so I think that experience, um, and just being a community activist, um, it, it, it pays. Uh, I, I strongly believe if you don't participate in a process, or if you don't participate within your city, within your, uh, with city, city government from an activist perspective, then I think you bring a shallowness. Um, but if you've been engaged and you're constantly engaging, I think you bring a wealth of, of, of just know-how. Um, and that's important, having some know-how and the ability to be able to uh, agree to disagree, uh, and move forward in a way that's going to allow our city to benefit. Um, so I think that's what I bring to the table, if I'm so blessed to be chosen.
So my, my last question is, I, I was on the radio this morning, and this question came up, and I thought it was very, very important. And especially, uh, as somebody that lives in this city, and as somebody that is raising young boys and uh, potentially young men, and I was raised, I was asked this question this morning, which I, I wanna hear your perspective on it, 'cause I think it's very, very important. What do you think is the role of fathers in this community in terms of gun violence?
Oh, wow, that's, that's a very good question. Um, the roles of fathers, period, is a critical role. Um, because our sons need us, but our daughters need us. You know, um, I always think about, you know, Luther Van, um, I think it's Luther Vandross. He said, "Color me dad." You know, when you are present in the lives of young people in our community, they're, when they go out into our community and they're involved in things, when you're present, there's a little thing in the back of their mind that makes them say, "Well, I gotta deal with that." Now, me on the other hand, I lost, my, my dad left when I was young. So I have my grandfather, and if anybody, only person probably would know is Ms. Hudson. If you knew Mr. Williams, ooh, Lord, you just, there's things you just didn't wanna do, or you didn't want it to come back to him. 'Cause my grandfather was a big man, and when he hit you with that belt, it didn't just, it wrapped around you. You know, so having a man in the house or a male figure, in my, in my opinion, or in the community, is critical. And then having a man involved in just out in the streets, you know, something that my friend, I, Benny, we talk about, Benny McDowell, Benny McDowell is who teaches the gun sa- uh, safety, and I, I work with them. Um, having men in our community, out in our community, being about our community business, helping these young fellas in our community who are straying off. It was a vision that I had, had I, when I ran for mayor, that we talked about, and what I talked about was engaging some of the people that I grew up with. And there's names I can throw out who are synonymous in our community, and they're, they're good, they're good brothers. Some of them got caught up in some situations, those who changed their lives, those are good dudes who wanna do some stuff in our city. Empowering them to be a part of that process to help curb the violence or curb issues that happen in our, so it's, 'cause you, they won't know you. But if I send, uh, a Carl Newton, or if I send, um, uh, and I was calling by his nickname, but uh, my man, Scar, Sean, if I send them and I say, "Hey, we need to address this issue." I can, we could walk into an environment, a hostile environment, and the temper's can bring, can be, can come down immediately. Because of their, whether it's street cred or their name or their reputation, it tempers the level. And so having men engaged in our community can definitely change what we deal with in our city of, of gun violence. But they have to be empowered, and most of them sit back because they don't feel as though they're being asked to be engaged.
Well, I only have two, I can't have follow-up, so I'm gonna.
But before you, before you leave, it took me about maybe seven minutes, or this is a council.
Okay, Mr. David, don't forget your time.
No, this is a council, this is a council decision. If I get a ticket, I, I expect, I would hope that all you guys would help. The meter said, "Approve, we're waiting." And it's still, it's still, it's probably still waiting, so somebody probably got my ticket about three fifty.
You should've took a picture.
We've had, we, we've had more than a few city, we've had more than a few city councilors say newspaper stories about unpaid tickets.
Unpaid tickets.
Over the years, presidency.
Thank you, Counselor Majuck, and I'm gonna start over on this end now. Counselor Schilt?
Thank you, Madam President. And I was gonna keep my, my questions similar, um, but I do wanna point out something that you said earlier, and um, I appreciated your honesty, saying that, you know, sometimes things get heavy, and certainly living in this city, and you've been here your life, so you know. And some days you wake up in the morning and you're like, "Wow, this is the best city ever." And other days you wake up and you just feel beat up, like you just don't have anything in your tank anymore, and how are you gonna go on? But I, I applaud you for coming here today, knowing all of that and having felt that, and still trying to, you know, have a seat at the table to represent the people, to make positive change, so. Um, my question for you is the same. I asked Mr. Monto, and that was, what are your top two or three priorities that you would like to see as fit this or council that you'd like to start working on, should you get the appointment?
Uh, my top one would be gun violence. That's a problem. And it's a problem nationwide, but I live in Syracuse, and it's a big problem. As a person who teaches gun safety, I take young people to the range, I take women, men, whoever signed up, like, we take them to the range, we teach them about guns. It's something that we, we discussed about maybe having, uh, actually writing a piece of proposal to do gun safety in a way that we can just teach young folks about guns and the calamity that they cause, the damage that they cause. Um, because gun violence in our city is, 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 is real. Um, and when you have a sense of hopelessness, when you don't feel as though you're connected, most of our young people don't feel anyone on this table, and they know, s- those of us who've been present, they know who you are, but they don't feel a connection. They don't feel a sense of ownership or a sense of, you know, "I'm a part of that." And so we, for me, that's one of the things that I believe is a very, very, it's on my top. And then my second would be opportunity and access. Many people in our community don't feel as though the access is real, or the opportunities are real. And so we have to, and I say we, if I'm blessed to be chosen, we have to figure out a way, how do we change that narrative? So that access and opportunity and resources are real, and not just in a vacuum.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna ask two questions. My first question is gonna be my second question that I asked Jimmy Monto, but kinda in the reverse. So obviously, we know that you're good at Parkside Commons, you're, you're good going up by the Boys and Girls Club, that part of the east side. But over in his neighborhood, in Eastwood, what's your method for being able to communicate with those constituents and be able to kinda build that relationship so that way they're comfortable with coming to you as your district, as their district counselor?
Um, thank you, and thank you as well. Presence, presence. You know, I live on Brookford Road, which is a few houses down from Christ King Retreat. Very affluent neighborhood. I don't hear gunshots. I don't have a lot of problems that, you know, my aunts and uncles and cousins, uh, have. And so when I'm in my neighborhood and, and just when I'm doing things, my neighbors come to me right now, you know. They say, "Oh, well, you're connected to the city." I'm like, "No, I'm not." "No, no, 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 you ran for mayor." I said, "But I ran for mayor." I'm like, "Whoa, whoa." And then they'll tell me their problems. And then I'll say, "Okay, well, this is a counselor for that." I used to send them, "This is a counselor for that, for this district. This person could assist you with addressing the issues." So to answer your question, whether the, whether the neighborhood or whether, when you look at the fifth district, because it's large, uh, whether you're in Eastwood or whether you're in, considered the upper east side, no matter where you are, uh, presence is important. And being able to show your presence or make your presence felt, and then being able to articulate to the individuals who are seeking you in a way that makes them feel as though not only do you see them, but you hear them. And of course, we, you can't help everybody. You're not gonna please everybody, but you could do your best to give them your presence to try to help.
Okay. So my second question is more on the, uh, I would say the political side of this. So if you are appointed to the seat, you get into the seat, but then you have to run an election next year, correct? Right, he has to run next year, so. And then he would still have to run next year, right?
This year.
This year and next year, right? So that's a lot. Um, and especially, I mean, this year you probably won't have to dish out as much, you know, but next year, that's, that's a huge race. Um, and especially if the redistricting happens. So if the redistricting happens, it changes the whole narrative of this situation. Um, are you up for that challenge for running next year? And do you feel like you have the resources and the connections in that new district, so to speak, to actually be able to win? And I'm just gonna be blunt, like, to win?
Yes. Um, absolutely. And, and I say absolutely, uh, you know, when you, when you run a campaign, when you manage a campaign, there was a few elements for me that was critical. One is the ability to raise capital. Two, the ability to get before people that you've never got before, in front of before, so that they can hear your message. Um, and I think, uh, because I've been successful in running campaigns, Langston McKinney, Charles Anderson, my wife, um, and others that I've worked on.
Who's your wife? You're gonna have to name drop, don't just say my wife. Say her name.
Judge Felicia Pitts Davis.
Okay, yes, my wife. Okay.
Judge Felicia Pitts Davis, Charles Anderson, Langston McKinney, um, and others that I've worked on, the campaigns that I've worked on, Sam Roberts. When you, when you understand the dynamics of running a campaign, um, you understand the critical. you understand the critical elements of what that entails. And so to answer your question, I think I have not only the skillset, but the ability to raise capital to make that happen.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for coming. I'm gonna ask the same questions I asked Mr. Monto. First, is the redistricting, talk about your opinion of the process that the committee went through and the ultimate product that they've proposed?
The, the process, I've attended a couple of meetings. The process, I would say was fairly decent. I would say that I don't think it was as inclusive as some would like to think it was, because when you didn't have, you know, when I, all the ones that I've attended, the majority of the people who were at those meetings were people from the, the further west side, which would be the Tipp Hill area. Those are the majority of people who was at every meeting that I went to. And so I think it could have been a little better in terms of putting the information out there and getting other community residents to participate in the process so that they can understand the full scope of, of what this really means in terms of changing the dynamics of the districts and drawing the lines. What has been proposed, I don't agree with. And um, I would like to see them reevaluate that process and present something I think that would be amenable to everybody and supportive of everybody based on how they drew the maps. And I actually saw, had the pleasure of seeing the way it's going to look if it's voted on. And I, I'm, I'm not too pleased with that.
Thank you. Second question is the, the two policy issues. One, rezone Syracuse, you know, if you have an opinion on the process for that and the ultimate proposal that's out there. And then bus rapid transit. So the idea of having increased bus services along commercial corridors in the city, if you have an opinion on that as well?
Well, the, the, let me go backwards. With the bus rerouting buses, we have a lot of people who use Central. And so if, based on where some of these companies and corporations are opening up at, folks who get jobs need that bus route, need those buses to be able to transport to and from. And so if, if it's going to work in a practical way that will allow access, then absolutely. Because we need to make sure that we are fitting the needs of the people of our city so that they're able to be about and go to different things that they have to get to. When you talk about the rezoning and dis, rezoning for the businesses and residential, there are some things that, that, that I think that can be done to help push that narrative forward so that, so that people feel inclusive versus exclusive in that process. And when we look at, let's say for instance, West Scott, I, I visit that area a lot. Because it's far, it's close to Miami. And I like to go up there and go to a couple of the shops, have my breakfast. Right next to it is adjacent from that is residential. And then when you go on James Street, the same thing, you know, you got the James Street, you know, business corridor and then right next to that is residential. South Salina, which is the area I think we need to boost more businesses so that you can have the same type of business climate and then residential. But when we dealing with the residential aspect of it, we have to make sure that we are trying to bolster those areas in terms of resources. So that if you had West Scott, you go residential, it's great. Eastwood residential is great. South Salina and you go residential, then we dealing with dilapidated. So we have to, as a council, look at how we can change some of those dynamics and bring access and opportunity for areas within the entire city. Because it doesn't bode well if we only have a few areas that are prospering. And then we don't have other areas. And then I would say the same thing for the west side. That I'm not having the same joy of a business quarter and residential that is pleasing and pleasing to the eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go back on something you said, Mr. Davis. Because I sit on a lot of boards, I sit in a lot of chairs and there's a lot of conversation on different things happening in the city. So you said that putting out the information and people aren't getting it, which I have to differ on that. Because we put out a lot of information and people just don't come. So if they're not coming, even with the information being given to them, how do you propose we get, because I've sat in meetings where the information was pumped out for a month and four people showed up. So how do you propose to get the information to the people?
That's a great question, Madam President, and thank you for that. And I, I agree with you. Because you've attended some things that I've done where we, you put out the information and people don't show. And so for me, I think we have to do a, 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 a trifold. Of course you do the dissemination through the media, through television and newspaper. But then you also, I think you do the dissemination through social media because that's where a lot of people gather. And then also you do the dissemination of, you know, flyers where you actually have a team that is dropping some lit to help kind of make that happen, to bolster it. But at the end of the day, it does fall back on the resident people in the community, whether or not if they want to participate. And I think when we are encouraging the participation in a way that says your participation will help us better understand how we can deliver this information to you or how, what we can do to help benefit you as a resident of this city, that can help. I'm not saying it's the answer. But that can help increase participation. Because that's at the end of the day, what we want is we want participation so that people can feel as though they've had an opportunity to engage in a level that's going to make sense when a decision is rendered and that they're impacted by that decision. For them, whether they feel it's positive or negative, we want to increase the level of participation. And so for me, I think to the, the answer to that question is trying to hit it at every level of, of, of disseminating information. Every level of, of, of getting the information out so that people can engage. And then personally saying to individuals that what you do, because I've seen you do it, your presence is needed because if you don't, decision is gonna be made with you or without you. And I think when people hear that, they're more inclined to say, okay, well, if you said that to me, let me, let me show up and have a listening ear to see what's going on. And let me show up to see so that I can have a concept or idea of what's going on.
Thank you. And then I have one more and I'm gonna keep pushing this way. Okay. I have been known to have a lot of passion. And sometimes that passion kind of throws me off a little bit. You have been known to have a lot of passion. So with the passion that you have, sitting at this table, there may be some controversial moments. Would you be able to sit here with the passion that you have? And it doesn't go the way you want it to go, to be able to come back the next day with a clear slate?
Absolutely. Because temperament is, is critical, you know, and being able to measure yourself in a way that is going to get to the bigger picture is important. And even if that bigger picture is not something that I like, if we as a collective body make a decision and I'm saying we, because I'm including myself as if I was blessed. And let's say it was seven two and it passed, but I didn't, was one of the two, wasn't four. The body has spoken. And so you have to understand that you represent the body. And you move with the body. And so being able to step back and say, okay, well, you know, that didn't go the way I would have liked it to gone, but back to the drawing board and hopefully when the next issue come up or if it's a piece of legislation that, that is presented from me, that I can get some support from those individuals who put legislation on the table that I didn't necessarily agree with. And so being able to have a give and take and being able to have a, 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 the adultness to say, I hear what you're saying. I don't, I didn't necessarily agree with that, but I could respect the position that you took and it passed and I, and I could ride with that and I'll support it because it's now legislation that we, that we, even though I didn't support, that we have presented to the people. And so it's a collective body. It's not an individual body. And so when you move from that premises, I think it's important to move from that premises. And as you indicated in your initial statement, you're very passionate about a lot of things in this community and so am I. But I do have the, the cuff to be able to temper my passion so that business is done in a meaningful way.
Thank you. Counselor Paniabla.
Hi, Afonso. I, I am gonna ask you a question and it's based on your professional profile. Something that caught my eye because it's something I'm very interested in and I work in, in the day in and day out. And you have, in terms of the economic development processes that are going throughout the city, investments in, in our different neighborhoods and development. You, you say in your professional profile that you have focused on creating and winning opportunities for small businesses. What does that look like?
What that looks like?
What's the expertise you bring to the table? What is the expertise you bring to the table in that sense?
What that looks like is, is, is bringing real access, bringing real opportunity and bringing real, real resources. Because most businesses, when they start, one of the main issues that they have in startup is, is getting to the next year and they have to deal with, there's a lot of things that they have to deal with in order to be prosperous. You gotta deal with, you know, the taxes, you gotta deal with overhead, you gotta deal with startup costs. And so I, I, and then you have to deal with particularly if you gotta sign up, you have to deal with coals. And so I think when you can, when you can streamline some of those things, some of those services so that a person who is creating or starting their business can, can focus on the actual running of the business, it gives them a greater opportunity to be successful because those other things have kind of been streamlined for that person. And I, you know, give the example again of, and I'll say West Scott and on the, on the west side, a particular person where I go and get my hair cut from, he's a barber shop and he's been running to a lot of issues with the zoning because of where he moved his barber shop. And his issue is having to go from one office to the next office so that he can get the proper permit to put up a, a sign so that he can generate, you know, business to his establishment. And that has been a problem for him. Same thing with my guy who runs the Moonjets. He had to sign up. It changed. Instead of the city working with him to say, okay, well, let's change the sign so that we can put the proper sign up. They said, nope, the sign is wrong because you didn't change it and you changed the menu and so we're gonna find you. That's not a way to create and establish or maintain businesses in our community when we're not working with businesses to be, to maintain their, their, their status quo so that they can be successful. And so we have to work with them in terms of making sure that services are streamlined, working with them to make sure that the access and the resources are available so that they can be successful. Because I'm a firm believer that small businesses is the engine that moves any city forward. You increase the level of small businesses in your community and your city, you increase the level of access and opportunity and resources. You increase the level of opportunities in terms of employment, you increase the overall level of building a city coffers so that that rises.
Thank you. And one last question and this aligning with the questions that President Hudson was asking. And I also asked this to Jamie, you know, what are, what guides your decision-making process in a difficult situation, maybe in adversity, like she was proposing in the question? Or, or in any, you know, decision-making process? What, what guides that? What do you think of first? Who do you think of first?
I think of how it will affect the masses. And how will it affect the people who will be affected by that decision? And too often we make decisions in a vacuum. And we don't think outside the box to say, well, how will it impact the entire city? We say, well, as long as it's good for my friends and my peoples, I'm good. But if that's not a decision that's going to be good for a good majority, then in my opinion, it's not a good decision. Because it is personal. And when you render decisions at this level, it can't be personal. It has to be at a level that is going to allow access and real services to be rendered to the masses. And that's what I try to, you know, measure my decisions on, you know, when I, when I do things and from the many things that I've been involved with.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for being here. The first question I have is understanding that we do on the council make decisions as a wide holistic approach with the broadness of Syracuse City, City of Syracuse. What does the fifth district mean to you?
I've been in the fifth district, ooh, twenty years? I'm thinking. And it's crazy because I have to ask my wife, how long we been in here? I've been in the fifth, in the fifth district for some time. And I've lived in a couple of different areas in that fifth district. And I, I think I was listening to Councilwoman Latoya's question in regards to being able to render the same service that you render to people in Eastwood, to you render to people in, where I live at and rendering to people on Hilltop and in Crowley. There's a different approach, obviously, because you're dealing with different people. But the level of respect has to be across the board. So for me, I see the fifth district as a, a very big district that has its issues in terms of those who feel inclusive and those who feel exclusive. And if I'm blessed to be the one chosen, my goal is to start with those who feel exclusive. Is to show them that your voice, your concerns, your issues are just as important as those individuals who are the squeaky wheels that always get the attention. individuals who are the squeaky wheels that always get the attention. So for me, that's my perspective or how I feel about the fifth district. I think that there's areas in the fifth district just, quite honestly, and this is no disrespect to, to you, who don't feel inclusive. Because they've said that to me during my campaign process and we have to change that. And I say we, whether it's me or whether it's Jimmy, it has to be changed because people have to feel as though they are part of a process when decisions are being rendered that affects them.
My second question is, in your eyes, what is a common council in the City of Syracuse?
In my eyes, the common council is the checks and balance between city management and the municipality and rendering of good government. Councilors, in my perspective, have a responsibility to make sure that when looking at the budget, making sure that the budget is amenable to what's going to help move the city forward. And then making sure that there's some checks and balances. The second piece is actually writing legislation, you know, and looking at what can be done in a meaningful way that is going to move the pentium dial and move the city forward in a way that is going to be inclusive versus exclusive. And so for me, the council plays a huge role in the day-to-day operation of our city and how it functions. And, and it has to be some checks and balances. Many years ago, probably before you were born, we had a, a situation where the power was 70-30. And the mayor ruled with an iron fist. And since then, there's been some level to, to the process. And I think that has to maintain and has to be always done in a meaningful way.
That's it, counselor? All righty.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That was funny, he said before you was born. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Um, I'm gonna ask, I was going to ask Zach the same question, but they were sort of answered already. But one of the questions I would like to start off is, what keeps you up at night when it comes to the City of Syracuse?
Um, I would go back to one of the main issues that I have in this. You know, your, your phone go off. It sounds silent right now, but your phone go off. There's a shooting on so-and-so street. This person got shot, that person got shot. People in our community dying, like, I was at my best friend's funeral, Wallace Flag, at the repass, and I got a call from my wife, my nephew got killed. Shout out Midland. How do you process that? Like, you got your best friend's funeral and then you get a call, frantic call, that your nephew got killed. So for me, that's, and I wish I had the answer. Because if I had the answer, whether I'm in office or not, I would say, hey, councilors, this is, this is it. This is what we can do to change that. But I am constantly working towards, how do we change that process? So the level of calamity in our community, losing young people, is what keeps me up at night.
Thank you. And my next question is, um, part of being a common counselor, whether you're a large or district, it's a lot of time, right? A lot of time spent away from family, a lot of time spent in the community, not just fifth district, but, you know, just supporting each other. How do you feel about, um, you know, working late hours, you know, getting calls in nighttime?
Saturday, Sunday.
Saturdays, weekends. So how do you feel about that?
Excuse me. I don't have a problem with that at all because it happens now. Councilwoman, it happens now and I'm not on the council. And they'll call me, I'll be like, well, call your counselor. You know, so, and my wife says to me, you know, you, you're not the champion for everybody. And, and you, and you really have to balance it. Because if not, as Madam President said, Saturday and Sunday, folks will call you 24/7 because they think that you have the magic pill or the antidote to solve the problem. But if I'm blessed, the same thing that I applied currently, I'll apply now, you know, trying to make myself available. And then you do have to, and I say this to you councilors, and I'm sure, you know, those of you who've been here for a long time and those who just got, got, uh, recently arrived, that you have to have some cutoff. Don't call me on Sunday. You know, I'm in church. You know, you have to, you have to set some parameters for residents so that they know that we're human too. You know, we're human too. Yeah, I'm, I'm your elected official, but we're human too. We have a life. Our goal is to serve you, but we also have a life. So just be respectful of that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hogan.
Mr. Davis and I go back a long ways. We ran against each other, as a matter of fact.
Yes, we did. Don't hold that against me.
You finish third, I finish second.
See, see, see?
And you know what? I'll have to say this, Mr. Davis calls me on occasions about city issues and I figured if you do join us on the council, we'll make you in charge of signs and zoning. It'd be perfect. Because it's easy, well, as we well know. You know, I've known you for a long time and I've respected your passion, your, and your love for the city. I never knew you worked for the city school district. And so, just a little thumbnail sketch here, I, uh, when I first got on the council, I had been working at Seymour School and Martin Luther King School. And I had the opportunity and the blessing and, and was blessed to be able to vote six or seven years ago, or six or seven years later for $53 million for Fowler School.
Wow.
And at that time, Fowler, Ross Sewidge and the Cafeteria, I think President Hudson remembers that. And, uh, that was a, uh, a great, uh, way of financing school reconstruction that we did with the administration.
Yes.
And I just wa, wonder how your views on the city were formed by your teaching experience?
Um, I, I missed being at the city school district and, um, you know, um, Madam President and I worked at the same company and I, you know, my, my wife says, do you ever think about, you ever thought about maybe you should have stayed at the school district? This is when Chrysler left. But I measured it like this. Six months in the school district, I mean, um, six months in, six months at Chrysler, I think I was at like 65. Income, six months. A whole year at the school district, 42? You do the math. It was, it was an easy choice, but when you think about the full process, process of it in the, in the, in the totality of it, um, I sometimes say, wow, maybe I should have stayed, uh, because I, I get from Ms. Williams who lives on my street, she's a retired teacher, you know, Evelyn, Evelyn, Evelyn Williams. Is it, is it first name? I've never called her by first name. And to this day, I won't. But she said to me, because she was my student teacher, you know, the district needed you as a black male because of how you brought yourself to school every day. This is how I dressed every day. Every day when I went to the night. Shirt, tie, slacks, briefcase, when I came to teach, every day. Because I wanted to create an image to young men of a, a level of professionalism and what it looks like. And to present yourself in a way that is meaningful so that you can strive for things greater and other than what you're, where you, the neighborhood that you're coming from and what you see along the way. And so the school district has been wonderful to me in terms of what I was able to get even from my coworkers. When I left the district, I was at Corcoran, Cor, Corcoran.
I never thought I'd get out of Corcoran.
Yeah. Well, Corcoran is the best, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna start, I ain't gonna start, you know, the mighty C. I, I know we got some bulldogs over there, but you know.
No, 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 stay on track. Let's go, let's go. Stay on track, no.
But I was at Corcoran, Henne, Corcoran, Grant, Henneger and Fowler. The only school I didn't have the opportunity, well, I was at Nottingham, but for short, brief, I was, uh, subbing. But what I love about the district is that the district has the ability to engage our young people in a meaningful way that is going to allow, um, true growth. But the level of professionalism and what's missing in the district, to be just completely honest, is black and brown teachers. There's not enough. And so I understood what Ms. Williams was telling me when she said, the district needs you. And part of me says, I wish I had have stayed, I'd probably be with, I'd be retiring. But the other part was, you know, I knew I had a, a meaningful impact on young people on a day-to-day basis when I came across them, when they saw me. And some of my students right now, to this day, say to me, you know, Mr. Davis, you know, you changed my life, you know, you helped me, you know, you got, you kept me focused, you know? That's the piece that I really miss. It's because I knew I tried to be the best me when I was in the school district, uh, working and teaching and also I, 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 when Mr. Bellinger passed away, I don't know if you know him, his name is Wim Obowali Bellinger, he taught African dance. When he died, I took it over. And just to, when you leave, you know, things just kind of fall to the wayside. So those are my regrets, is that I didn't stay to continue that. You know, but I had a family to think about and it was economics.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm okay, President Hudson.
Okay. We're gonna ask the auditor if he has anything else he wanna end us with?
Okay.
No, thank you. Mr. Davis, thank you for your interest in being part of the council.
Thank you.
Along with Mr. Montos, thank you for your interest. We will be in touch at some point shortly and I'm gonna say on behalf of the council, have a wonderful day.
I'd like to thank all you councilors for the opportunity to come before you. And if you have any questions for me prior to rendering your decision, you could always look on my resume and call me and, and hopefully I'll have an answer for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just for the record, somebody told me last week that we are on 24/7, so that's the respect they have for us.